I called the Tuesday, April 9, 2019, work session, meeting of Portsmouth City Council to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Glover?
Here.
Mrs. Lukasberg?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. Dr. Patton?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. The first presentation this evening is a tenured public servant, Mr. Jim Spoor, the President and Chief Executive Officer of Reinvent Hampton Roads. I stress "tenured" for Mr. Spoor retired in 2016 as City Manager of the City of Virginia Beach, having served in that capacity for 24 years. Reinvent Hampton Roads is an outgrowth of a community leadership initiative of the Hampton Roads Community Foundation, and it was launched in 2012 focusing on regional economic competitiveness. It became a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in January of 2016. The organization serves as a community frame for game-changing activity that will improve the economic performance and profile of the region over time. Reinvent's goal is to find an aspirational strategy that embraces the region's traditional employment sectors while also attracting and nurturing new employees, entrepreneurs, and industries. The second presentation, interim chief Angela Green, will provide insight into the violent crime initiative, reduction initiative, to reduce, suppress, disrupt, and eliminate violent crime within the city of Portsmouth through intelligence-based resource allocation and various strategies. This initiative is a coordinated effort with the communities and residents directly impacted by violent crimes and the Police Department, who is entrusted in providing a safe community for all citizens of Portsmouth. The Police Department recognizes the need for partnership and collaboration with outside agencies as well as communities served to reduce violent crimes within communities. Mr. Spoor.
Thank you very much, Dr. Patton, and—
Jim, before you start, thank you for coming. And thank you for your long-tenured service to—
Thank you. Thank you very much. And good afternoon, everybody.
Give us just a moment, it'll come up.
I don't know how many wahoos we have in here, but a couple of you look a little tired. I know I am. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come over. When the mayor extended the invitation to come and talk to you a little bit about an update on Go Virginia and mainly focusing on Reinvent Hampton Roads, I really was excited about the opportunity. And I was telling him I'd been over here last month to brief the Portsmouth Division of the Chamber of Commerce. And I was driving over, and with the tunnel in the morning, I didn't want to be late, so I got here a little early, had some time, drove around Old Town, was standing in the Town Bank Boardroom where the Chamber meets, looking out, and the aircraft carrier goes up the river. And I said to Tony at the time, I said, "What a beautiful city this is and the fantastic assets that you have here in Portsmouth." So it's a real pleasure for me to be here and give you this brief update. A little bit about Go Virginia, and then I'll get into Reinvent Hampton Roads because they're somewhat interrelated. Go Virginia is a new program. I say "new," it was adopted by the Virginia General Assembly in 2016 in that session. The GO stands for Growth and Opportunity, and it's really a bipartisan business-led development initiative that's really changing the way we think about economic development in the state. And it's focused on one thing, that is collaboration amongst communities to create more higher-paying jobs, and that is the exclusive focus of that. It is the first time in the Commonwealth of Virginia that the state has incentivized, with some money, cities to work together to create jobs. And so it's been a real game changer. And what we've been about during the last couple of years is really socializing that around the Commonwealth and around the region. The state, for the Go Virginia program purposes, is divided into nine regions. We're Region Five, and it's what you think about traditionally as Hampton Roads plus the Eastern Shore. The two counties and the Eastern Shore are included in our Region Five. So we have about 1,730,000 people living in that region. The money from the state is programmed in two ways. One is on a per capita basis, so we get a lot of money because we've got significant population here. And then there's another pool of funds called competitive funds, which are to be used for, if you can develop projects, to collaborate, to create jobs between regions. So we're working with Region Four, which was the Richmond region, for example, on some projects. We're working on Region Six, which is the upperneck, middleneck peninsula, on some other projects as well. So that's our region. Each of those regions is required by the legislation to have a regional council. We have a 28-member Region Five council for the purposes of administering the Go Virginia program, and it's a mix of elected officials, academics, business, community representatives, and citizens, and you can see the list there. Majority of the members have to be from the business community, and the chair and vice-chair of the council have to be business folks as well. Some of the projects that we have funded, as I said, the program was approved by the State General Assembly in 2016. We really got it up and running in '17. So our first grants were not awarded until fairly late December of '17. These are the largest four that we've put out. The Virginia Cyber Alliance is a partnership with Old Dominion University, a number of cities and counties and other organizations. It's actually based out of V-Mask in Portsmouth, Virginia, in my head. And it's really to develop jobs around cybersecurity, to develop a curriculum around cybersecurity that can be used by our employers and by our schools, and to create internships and new jobs, and do actual R&amp;D in terms of new products in the cyber world. The 757 Seed Fund is a fund to help small businesses grow. It's after they come out of typically the accelerator or the business incubator, and they're not quite ready for venture capital funding. The Seed Fund provides them money to sustain them until they grow their product and their sales and can qualify for venture capital in a more traditional sense. The Virginia—excuse me—the Virginia Digital Shipbuilding is a fantastic program in partnership with Huntington Ingalls, a number of cities, the University, Siemens, Purdue University, Old Dominion University, and it really is focused on building ships in a totally different way. And this is being implemented right now by Huntington Ingalls. It's causing about a 20% reduction in their production costs, and it really allows them to build ships and assemble ships without any blueprints. It's paperless, it's a totally different way of going about advanced manufacturing. One of the reasons we funded that in part was the technology that's been developed there can be applied to any kind of advanced manufacturing. If you're building cars, airplanes, ships, anything you're making can use this technology. And then the final one I'd mention is the Hampton Roads Unmanned Systems Facility, and this is a partnership with five cities and counties on the peninsula to create a park for unmanned systems design, manufacturing, testing, and hopefully attracting some unmanned systems manufacturers into our region. It's on a 462-acre site that's a surplus piece of property that the Commonwealth of Virginia has declared surplus. One of the really important things about this project, as a part of that, they developed what is called a RIFA, which is an Industrial Facilities Act that can be used by those five-member communities to pool funds, to cause the investment to happen on the Unmanned Systems Park, and as they sell off or lease off some of that property, the proceeds from that endeavor can be—that joint effort can be shared. The RIFA, we have conversations going right now around the region to expand that. It could apply to the entire region so that cities could, based on any kind of project we could come up with, share the cost of the project and share the revenues from its development. So if you're Pococin and you don't have any industrial sites, but you want to participate in an industrial site in Portsmouth, for example, you could put your money on the table and contribute to that project, and then when the project bore some fruit, you'd share in the revenue. So I think that's kind of the keys to the kingdom in terms of really encouraging municipal collaboration rather than competition. This chart, I just wanted to show you. We have approved some other projects there. You may not be able to see it, but we got Portsmouth. Portsmouth is on three of those. You guys are partnering on these with us in terms of making these things happen. The first four that I briefly explained are the top four there. We just approved three additional ones for the Angel Network over on the Eastern Shore, a sanitary sewer project and site development project that will, for the first time, install a sanitary sewer system that will serve the entire Eastern Shore. This is kind of interesting. Hampton Roads Sanitation District does not service the Eastern Shore. They are doing this analysis for the communities, the towns, and the two counties over there. They are then going to petition to expand their service area to include the Eastern Shore. All of the septic systems, the package plants that are failing, and all of that can be abandoned, and the Eastern Shore could be served by a modern, environmentally sound sewer system. I think that, plus the broadband that they have over there, the access that they have, you could really see some development occur on the Eastern Shore, which is certainly needed. The Hampton Roads Coalition for Talent Development is kind of unprecedented. It's a small grant. It was $99,705. That's allowing 30 organizations in Hampton Roads to come together and plan for talent development on a regional scale, which we have never done before. Okay, Reinvent Hampton Roads, and Dr. Patton probably did a better job than I'm going to do in terms of explaining what we are. We were formed in January of '16. I started on January 4th in 2016 after I retired from the City of Virginia Beach on the 31st of December. So I took that long weekend off and then came back to work. It's been absolutely fantastic. We are trying to look at how we change this region's economic profile in some pretty creative and collaborative ways, and I'll talk about a few of those here in a minute. We're funded by the Community Foundation, Go Virginia. The Go Virginia program provides funds to the regions to administer the Go Virginia program, so we get some money from them. The Port of Virginia, the Business Roundtable, we've got some individual contributors, and Heretta and Greater Peninsula Now for our first-year funding, they provided some of that as well. So we're off and running. We have a massive staff of three people, and we also have a Board of Directors. We have 14 members on our Board of Directors. There are the folks that are working on there. A lot of the larger industrial business firms in the region in terms of Centerra, the Port, Huntington Ingalls, and so on. So great Board of Directors. Our mission is very simple. It's to create and grow more higher-paying jobs in the region, and to do that in a way that encourages collaboration amongst our jurisdictions. Those of you that have been around here a while, right, Elizabeth, know about competition in this region, and the mayor certainly has experienced that, so we're trying to get people to really partner up and do some really good work. And our approach is simple. It's to be comprehensive. We view this region, and any region, as really a system of systems when you think about it, whether it's personnel, whether it's our citizens, our transportation, our economy, our environment, and all those systems interact in ways. And we're trying to understand that and to create some positive momentum. The only way we can get things done is by partnering with others. We have absolutely no authority over anybody on anything, so we reach out and try and get people to work together. And that, I think, because we don't have any authority, people are much more open to hearing us out and kind of jumping in the pool with us, and we've had some real good success. And so we want to focus on actionable solutions. The reason I think Hampton Roads needed Reinvent Hampton Roads is—I've got a couple of slides that show that. These talk about what happened after the Great Recession. How long did it take for this area to get back to where we were in 2007? And you can see over on the far right that green line, that's Hampton Roads. It took us over 11 years to get back to where we were in 2007 in terms of jobs in this region. The nation and the state of Virginia, the rest of the state, got back to where they were, the pre-recession peak, after about 77 months. So we lacked by—lagged almost by six years, the rest of the country and the rest of the state, in terms of getting back to where we were. If you look at our quarterly job growth, and I don't know if you can see that from where you are, but it displays the regions that we typically say are our peer regions, and whether it's Nashville up on the top, Raleigh, Charlotte, Charleston, Jacksonville, Greenville, Richmond, DC, the rest of Virginia, and then Hampton Roads. Unfortunately, this is us, and there's Richmond, there's the rest of Virginia, and Nashville. So you can see, compared to those other regions, our job growth has been very, very modest over the years. And so we feel like with the assets that we've got as a region, we need to be doing better. And that's really what led the Community Foundation to create the Reinvent Hampton Roads project, is that we needed to have somebody thinking about some of these issues on a full-time basis and trying to bring the region together to develop our economy collaboratively. This is your refrigerator diagram, but what this is, is a model that we created in terms of how do you create jobs in an economy, in a regional economy? There's only three ways to do that. You either grow the jobs you've got with the companies you've got, you start new companies, startup growth, or you recruit jobs and companies from the outside to come into your region. That's it. If you do a good job with those three, you'll create the local service and retail jobs. They will come in to support those other basic kinds of jobs. There's other factors in terms of the regional culture and infrastructure is really important in terms of setting that tone and having the transportation facilities and those kinds of things. You see leadership up there on the far right, that's your expertise. And what we're trying to do in Reinvent is we have programs in every one of these boxes on the systems chart. So that's all I really want to say about that, is that we're working on every one of those pieces of the system, the theory being, if every part of a system's working, the system's going to work better. There's an emerging model of economic development that I think is really important, and Robert and his team get this and are working on it collaboratively with us. On the left side, you see the way we used to do economic development. That big gray area called business attraction, that's what the old Heretta did. You put out some marketing materials, you tried to attract new companies to come in to your city or your region, and that was it. So we had all the eggs in the one basket. And what most of the experts at Brookings that we've partnered with, IBM, PLI, McKinsey, all of the folks that study this thing are saying that you really need to have a much more systematic approach that's much more comprehensive, that looks at workforce and entrepreneurship and sites and real estate, and business attraction's still part of it, but it's a small part. So it needs to be a much more systematic, comprehensive approach to economic development. And that's what we're doing. We've called together what we call our RED Team, which is the Regional Economic Development Directors. Robert served on that. He was an active participant in that, and we're taking on issues together in a much more comprehensive way. Dr. Patton has been involved with the other chief administrative officers in working on how do you implement this new model in terms of the old Heretta? And that whole transformation is taking place right now, and all the cities are being asked to participate in that, and we've gotten really good response. So we're really excited about this. It's going to be, for the first time in this region, a truly regional economic development program. And the old model, the cities used to say to Heretta, "Bring us the leads and then get out of the way, and we'll do the rest." We're now saying, "Listen, we need a partnership model. We need to work together on these things, and we can be a lot more successful that way if we work together." I'm not going to go over all of these. I just want you to get a flavor for some of the things that we're working on. We've—there's, I think, 13 items on here. I'm just going to mention a couple of them. The site inventory, and then there, we're working with the EDP at the state level to inventory all of our industrial sites by Friday. You're going to meet the deadline? Yeah. We're updating our inventory with the state, and all 17 cities and counties in the region are doing this together. We have then launched into a program to certify those sites as—under the Business Ready Sites Program at the state level, which is an interesting program. We got the Virginia Natural Gas, Dominion Energy, the Port, Reinvent, and the Planning District to come together to take on the business of actually certifying these sites that we've inventoried and are inventuring right now so we can actually represent with some fidelity that these sites are ready to develop. We are identifying for each of the sites where they might be short. We're identifying what it would cost to bring them up to become shovel-ready, and then we may use that RIFA technique that I mentioned earlier to share the cost of developing those and then share the proceeds as they develop. So that's an exciting one. Regional—I mentioned the Economic Development Alliance, that's that new model of economic development that's taking a lot of our time and effort. I think it'll pay huge dividends. The regional branding project, when I go out and talk to people, I get asked about Hampton Roads all the time. You know, is that a good name for this region or not? We've actually got a project, working collaboratively with a bunch of folks. It's going to start next month. You'll be hearing about it. And we're going to take a look at, not so much the name, but what's the message? How do we message? How do we market? And how can we—how can we align those messages? You think about it. We've got 17 different communities in this region. One of the first things I did when I started this job, I went around all 17 of them. You walk into the city hall or the county building, and invariably, here's a whole rack of all these things about what's so great about each of them. And you look at them, and they don't—there's not a consistent message there. So if you're a site-selection guy, you're a company looking, coming into this region, we're sending some very mixed messages out there. So we want to try and coordinate that and focus that a little bit so that we're selling our best assets in an aligned and consistent way. The broadband, cyber, big data, Portsmouth is the leader in this one.
We should give a round of applause.
We heard about it last Friday at the speech, but we are really excited about that. To take advantage of those transatlantic cables that are coming ashore in Virginia Beach, connecting up with a regional connection ring in the entire region, that's going to have huge benefits for us as well. Alternative energy, that's speaking to offshore wind. We think we have an unbelievable opportunity here in Hampton Roads to become the hub for the East Coast for offshore wind development. Portsmouth, with the shipbuilding, ship repair, the heavy industry, some of the skill sets that we've got in this city, in this region, it could be a prime, prime, prime location for the development of offshore wind. And the estimates that we've seen by some of the experts say that's 10,000 to 14,000 jobs potentially if that really takes hold. So that's an exciting opportunity. And the last one I'll mention is the Thomas Jefferson National Lab, the Electron Ion Collider. I don't know how many of you have heard about this. I mention this to people, and usually I get kind of a blank stare, but it's really a big deal potentially in terms of the next expansion of knowledge in nuclear physics. And the National Academy of Sciences has said that this project, if it can be funded, is the number-one priority in science for the United States. So what that is would be an addition, a massive addition, to the Jefferson Lab to take that, take nuclear physics to the next level. We would become the CERN of nuclear physics for the next 40 years. We are in competition between Brookhaven Lab in New York on Long Island and the Jefferson Lab. The facility's going to go to one of those two locations. So Reinvent pulled together a group that we are working on this, and we meet monthly to try and position ourselves to make sure we get this. It's about a $2 billion investment. It'd be 3,000 to 4,000 PhD scientists and engineers coming here to Hampton Roads, and we would literally be the epicenter of high-energy physics worldwide. People would come here from all over the world. So if you start thinking about that, coupling that with that digital shipbuilding project I was talking about, offshore wind, some of these kinds of things, and you start thinking about the potential of that, it's a pretty exciting time in Hampton Roads. And I'll just wrap up by just saying, as Dr. Patton mentioned, I've been working, toiling in the vineyards for a while here, and I'll tell you what, the last three or four, five years, I've seen—I've never seen collaboration any better than it is today. I think the cities are really working together. A lot of that credit goes to the chief administrative officers taking the lead on that, and a lot of the councils are being very, very collaborative, which was not the case 20 years ago or 10 years ago. So I think we've got a great future if we work together. Hampton Roads is a magnificent area with unbelievable assets, and we need to be doing a whole lot better than we've been doing. And we think with a systematic approach like we're working on that we'll get there. So I don't know if we have any time for questions.
Yes, you have time.
Again, thank you. That's awesome. Ken.
Jim, thanks again. On the slide that you showed with the different localities or different cities and where we stood on the job growth, is part of that due to our heavy defense, our defense industry? Does that kind of cause us to lag behind in terms of job opportunities and innovation?
Well, I think you're on to that. You know, with the sequestration and all of that that hit us, we kind of had a double whammy where most of the rest of the country did not have that, and the rest of the Commonwealth did not have that. We, you know, we love the military, we love the port, we love tourism, but if we're going to have a 21st-century economy, we've got to diversify a little bit. Need to continue to take advantage of the opportunities that the military brings, the port brings, and the tourism brings, but we also need that kind of fourth leg on that. It's not a stool, I guess, at that point, it's a table, but to hold that up.
Paul.
Because we're trying to do things in a collaborative effort manner, I noticed that the only applicant for higher-learning education was ODU. What was the problem with TCC and Norfolk State? Did they not know the procedure to apply, or did they not qualify?
Yeah, we've had—to—we picked three. We have Thomas Nelson Community College on the peninsula. We have Old Dominion, and William &amp; Mary. Dr. Rowe is also on there. So we've got those three. We've got a, what we call, an academic advisory group that is everybody. It's Norfolk State, it's TCC, it's Christopher Newport, Regent, you know, the whole bit. There's 14 of them that actually meet and advise that group. So we're trying to be absolutely as inclusive as we possibly can.
Bill. Jim, you touched on the name Hampton Roads, and I think we've all read where that conversation is going on about whether that's the best name to connect with the rest of the country. Where—what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, that's that regional branding initiative that we're just kicking off, and you're all going to have an opportunity to weigh in on this. But this came out of a group that Reinvent created to look at tourism and tourism development. We kind of organized around industry clusters, tourism being one of those in the region. And so that group studied this for about a year, not just the branding issue, but all of tourism development. It came back, one of their recommendations was Hampton Roads doesn't work as a tourism brand, and in fact, we don't think it works as a brand at all. We took that recommendation to the Reinvent Board, and we took it to the Hampton Roads Business Roundtable and gave some presentations on that. They were a little skeptical, and so the Business Roundtable said, "We're not ready to jump into that mess. We would like to create a committee of our own to look at that." So we did that. It was chaired by Bob Aston. We had 14 people on there, various folks from the region, and they studied it for a number of months. They came back and said, "You know what? The Tourism Cluster Committee was right. This—it doesn't work. We need to take a look at the branding." But it's got to be done in a professional manner. It's got to be an open, transparent kind of process, and it just needs to be done right. So we got a proposal. We went out for an RFP. We got a proposal from SIR. Some of you may know John Martin from—actually from Richmond and Norfolk, and their firm was selected. And we have a meeting tomorrow, as a matter of fact, to form some of the initial committees to work on this. And the point that he has stressed to us is, it's not about the name. The name is— The name is the last thing you ought to think about. It's about what is the perception of this area, of this region? What are our strengths? How do we position them to our best advantage? And he talks about place-making, place-marketing, and then out of that, maybe the name will come. Maybe it won't. We might keep Hampton Roads and use a series of taglines, you know, like Virginia's Global Gateway. You know, that's Hampton Roads. I don't know. So we'll see. It's going to be, it's going to be, hang on, boys, it's going to be a bumpy ride.
Yes, under Slide 12, the Job Creations Model. Are there some things that we're doing well and some things that we're not doing well? Are we on track with recruiting, attracting job growth? Or is there something we should be doing to try to help make it better?
You are doing it in terms of partnering on three of these projects that we've got and taking some leadership in terms of the redo of Hereta, for example. We're also engaged in the Hampton Roads Workforce Coalition, which is really the answer in terms of talent pipelines, which are probably as important, if not more important, than site development and facilities. It's really having a talent base here. So what we've seen in '18, we saw, '18 was a very good year. That slide I showed you just went through '17. '18, actually, we saw a tremendous uptick. I mean, it's the sharpest increase we've seen in probably, well, since before the recession in terms of job growth. So some good things are happening. I think, as I said, pursuing all the elements of that system, if we do it consistently over time and do it intelligently, we're going to win. We're going to see some good results, so.
Jim, last one I have. Transportation. You know, with all of this proposed development and growth, we've got to move people. We have to move them efficiently. I know that that's been a hot topic on how we do that. Have we given consideration to transportation? I'm sure as you look at what you're doing, that's a big part of it, right?
Yeah, that's that bottom sort of underlying foundation in terms of infrastructure. And if we don't have a good transportation system, you know, we're not going to be successful in the long run. The primary responsibility for that is the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization, as you know. And so we work with them. We work very closely with the port. They're one of our sponsors and funders. We're participating in the HRT process in terms of how do we rethink public transportation in the region and perhaps do more there, which is a tremendous need as well. So we're directly involved in a couple of those. The TPO is handling the surface transportation, pretty much. Everybody always talks about the airport. That's another cup of tea right there.
The airport, yeah.
Well, thank you all very much. I really appreciate the opportunity, and you'll be hearing more about a lot of these things. And I think with Dr. Patton's leadership, you're going to be plugged in.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you all, thanks. Thanks a lot.
More that you want to say, Matt, too? Yeah.
Let's go to our next item.
All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council will ask interim chief Angela Green to come forward with the Violent Crimes Reduction Initiative.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Please accept this presentation as a brief synopsis of the Portsmouth Police Violent Crime Initiative that we plan on implementing, and we started in the beginning of April as a result of an increase in violent crime that we observed in early March. And our plans on how we plan to partnership with internal agencies, external agencies, and our community stakeholders to reduce violent crime in the area. Based on our predictive crime analysis, we are going into the areas of 111, 112, and 212 zones. These areas encompass PRHA communities of Dale Homes, Lincoln Park, and Swanson Homes. We're going into these areas based on our increase of homicides year-to-date to now. We have an increase of 60%. This time last year, we had five homicides. Now we are at eight homicides. Three out of those eight homicides have occurred within three of these zones that we are going to. In addition, robberies are increased by 31%, as well as aggravated assaults, 23% increase due to people shot, with 61% increase of homes being shot. We know that in Dale Homes, the increase of aggravated assaults are a result of gang retaliation connected with the MacArthur Mall shooting. Again, our predictive crime analysis, which we will get into, has focused our concentrated areas in the neighborhoods surrounding Dale Homes, Lincoln Park, and Swanson Homes. We started watching the trend back in early March and began to formulate a plan. We wanted to make sure that we were focusing our efforts in the neighborhoods before we went in to make sure that the last two weeks ended in April 3. And we'll show you the maps. We still show an increase of violent crimes in these three neighborhoods. These are the maps based on predictive analysis. This map is year-to-date, starting January 1, 2019, through March 12, 2019, when we began to formulate our plan. The predictive analysis of the aggravated assaults, red is the majority of our violent crime. This is overlaying 112 and 111 area. And then it goes into orange, yellow, green. Again, here's 212, 111, 112 area. When we looked at the last two weeks, the aggravated assaults, still it has not moved as of April 3. Again, in the same areas that we're focusing in. When we looked at robberies starting in January 1 through March 12, these are the areas, again, with most of the violent crimes occurring in the red zone, moving out into orange, yellow, and green. Up until April 3, as you can see, the areas pretty much stay the same.
What'd you say?
I said, would you like to go back and give you all time to look at those frames and see the numbers that are in them?
Why don't you do that?
Okay, go all the way back to your start of your frames and let the council take time and look at the legends and then the numbers.
Okay.
Go to the next one.
And this is up until April 3.
It's a little area in Churchland that keeps popping up, too.
Over here?
Yes.
This will probably be Peachtree area, the vets. Again, we have isolated incidences over there. Now, remember, the green is the lowest number. Red is the highest number of incidents, then orange, yellow, and green being the lowest number.
So the orange area over in the Peachtree area are shots that may have been fired into a building?
Yes, because this is actual incidents.
Incident.
Yes, that's a shooting into an occupied building. Those are actual incidents. Would you like me to go to the next slide?
Please.
And then these are the robberies starting in January through March 12. Would you like me to move on?
Please.
Sure. And the same robberies up until April 3. Again, making sure we're staying in the same area that the crimes are occurring in.
That's the same area?
Same area. 212, 112, 111 encompassing these areas.
So each star is?
An actual incident. So the red stars are the individual robberies, the green stars are commercial robberies, and the yellow stars are carjackings.
So if we counted all the red stars on that one, we'd hit 20.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Go back to the last frame, and it says robbery, carjacking, two.
Mm-hmm.
So...
And then we had one.
Okay, that's three we've had in the city?
Yes.
In this area, okay.
And what were they last year? The same time period?
This is, well, this is year-to-date, but last year, we obviously have an increase of 31% in robberies compared to the same timeframe last year. So from January 1 of 2018 through April 3 of 2018, compared to January 1 of 2019 to April 3 of 2019, we have an increase of 60% of homicides, 31% of robberies, 23% of people shot, and 61% of homes being shot in these areas, just in these areas.
That's where the crime was.
So we implemented a plan on how to address these crimes, and this was a well-thought-out plan. We are taking our street crimes officers, no overtime will be incurred. They are being focused in those areas during the time and dates that our predictive crime analysis has occurred that these violent crimes are happening. They will focus on removing violent offenders from the community, wanted individuals, open-air drug markets, and removing illegal guns from the streets. We are requesting assistance from Virginia State Police. We have a commitment from them that they will come in May to assist us. Virginia State Police historically has gone into areas of Virginia where there is an increase in violent crimes. Historically, they go into Richmond every year. This year, they're coming to Newport News as well as Danville for the first time, and they are definitely going to help us out in Portsmouth with our violent crime reduction starting in May. So with them coming, Virginia State Police coming, I have contacted Commonwealth attorney Mrs. Stephanie Morales. Before they come, we will meet with our Virginia State Troopers that will be here with our street crimes officers, and Mrs. Morales will do an overview, a refresher of civil rights, search-and-seizure laws, and procedural justice training to make sure we are all on the same page before we go into the communities. Yes, ma'am?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Chief Green indicated that the state police watches the state. And when they see areas within the Commonwealth where it's unusual spikes, that is when they have this April-through-June program that they come in. That's the months where it appears that most of these kinds of...
As the weather warms up, violent crime increases.
And so they are approaching the City of Portsmouth Police Department, no expense to the city for them coming into working. And they give a percentage of how much they want to reduce it. And I think our...
Our goal is 20%, at least 20% reduction.
To reduce it.
So as well as the procedural justice for the state troopers, Commonwealth attorney has also graciously agreed to provide procedural justice training for the police department and her Commonwealth attorneys. And we are going to take that training to the community as well, so they can understand procedural justice and procedures if they feel they need to make a complaint, our Internal Affairs investigations as well. And we're getting the community involved with our police recruits who have not begun the recruit training yet. So they are in a non-law enforcement capacity. They have already went out into the neighborhoods of Dale Home, Lincoln Park, and Swanson Homes, passed out a survey, a quality-of-life survey. So we're teaching them how to solve problems already in non-law enforcement capacity. We're doing the surveys now, and then in 30 days, we're going to do the survey again to see if it's improving, if they are getting the service that they are requiring from the police department. As well as that, they're passing out community meeting flyers for the Dale Homes, Lincoln Park, and Swanson Homes that do not have an organized civic league or community meeting. We partnered with PRHA to formulate April 29 and April 30, we will hold a community meeting with residents of those communities. We will go back in 30 days, update them, as well as the civic leagues. I've already attended some of the civic leagues that are encompassing in those areas. I will go back, as well as the district lieutenants, every 30 days to update them on where we're progressing with the violent crime initiative and to bring them in to help us with the reduction of violent crime, to call the police if they see any suspicious activities or individuals in the area. And then, as I said, on the 29th and the 30th, we will go out to those areas of Dale Home, Lincoln Park, and Swanson Homes in cooperation with PRHA. These are the community flyer meetings that our recruits are passing out. That's the quality-of-life survey that I know is kind of small, but it can be made available upon your request if you want to review that. Any questions?
Very good presentation. Any questions?
Let me, this is not a question, but maybe we need to keep a better eye on PRHA. Let me say this. 30 years ago, I introduced civic groups. 30 years ago, we had linkage specialists that was there to meet the needs of the problem. Now, we can, the law enforcement, that's fine, but we have to make sure that the problems are being met. Now, HUD will be very supportive in most things, dealing with improving the quality of life in that area. So maybe, maybe they need to go to some type of trainings to, you know, let them know how vital civic groups are, how vital the linkage specialists are.
Absolutely.
That would make your job much easier.
Yes, sir.
So some kinds of way, we have to ring that bell.
Yes, and we're going to try to start that conversation when we bring them together on April 29 and 30, in the hopes of opening up that communication that not at the end of this initiative, but we want this to be a permanent resident meeting, that we can come out there every month and get them involved and keep that dialogue open.
Because we can't keep setting it up and losing it. Setting it up, we have to hold it.
I agree with you.
And find ways to hold it.
Paul, that's a good point. Can we, would we have consensus to ask the city manager to have you make that same presentation to Mr. Bland and his staff?
Well, I will raise my hand because I was getting ready to say Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Both the chief and I have met with Mr. Bland just last week, shared with him what this initiative is, how we want to continue to work with him, how we'd like to see civic organizations spring up in the public, well, not in the public, in the housing communities. In addition, Mr. Bland called to the chief's attention that last year, he had made the suggestion that in the housing community, that they reserved an apartment...
Apartment unit for a satellite office.
Where the police can, when they're in that community, and they may need to do some data or something, or something they have to stop, there will be a place for them to go. Years ago, we had that in our housing communities, but they were taken away under different leadership. But Mr. Bland shared with us where he came from. That was a great partnership with police and that he wanted to see that re-instilled. So we have a follow-up meeting with him, and he is the one who has set up those two dates for our team to go in there to meet with. They are getting the citizens in their communities to come.
You're ahead of us.
The last time that I'm aware, we had the state police here, we had a violent crimes task force in 1992, and I was on that task force. It's kind of similar to what's happening now. It was very productive, and we had, that's when we first started the need officers back then, and we had officers assigned to Ida Barba and Lincoln Park and Dale's when they first started the program. And what we found then, and I'm curious to find out if it's similar, the majority of the arrests that we were making were not residents of those neighborhoods. The people committing crimes did not live there. Once we started arresting the people causing the problems, the actual residents were, they had been trapped in their homes. They were starting to come out on their porches and that type of thing. So a lot of the problem is not the residents, it's the people coming in to do things that don't belong there. And that's, you know, and until you really get out there and find that's the problem, and that's how we did it, just like the chief's talking about, you know, working with that community, building trust with them, and you start sharing information, you start running the people out of there that don't belong there, because there was a lot of us at the time, back then, we were on paper as an agent for PRHA, so we could physically arrest people that were trespassing, that had no business being on that property. And getting the people out of there that don't belong there, that saves trouble for everybody, residents and everybody included.
And Councilman Clark, that, the same holds true today, which is why, as you said, we're still trying to get that buy-in from the community, because obviously they know who lives there and who does not live there. And as you said, the majority of individuals that are committing these crimes do not live there. So we want to make it safe and a quality of life for the residents that actually do live there.
And the resident initiatives, we applied this situation... And the resident initiatives, we applied this situation to that, and Glenn Perry was the officer in contact with me, and we had for a six-month period, a point-one crime rate.
Well, that's wonderful.
And we had six housing-
Project, that, that housing.
Then, and, you know, it disturbs me that they keep playing these games and not holding these, these projects and these programs that would improve the quality of life and make the place, the better place for everybody to live.
Permanently.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I understand.
Any other questions?
Just one small, I guess, observation, and lay us on to PRHA, so these conversations have come up about them having this kind of engagement, so I'm glad to see that it is on board and moving forward. Just wanted to know, you know, how their residents are receiving. I know the officers are happy to have this to occur, but the residents, I guess, will know that after they meet.
Yes, after the meeting, and through the surveys that we're putting out. So, we'll look at, again, the surveys that we did in the first week of April, and then in thirty days, if it improved, whether they think the quality of life has improved, or at least the police response has improved, and then at the end of the initiative, we'll look at the survey again and make sure that we're continuing to improve and address those areas of concerns that the residents feel, because, again, what they see and what we perceive as an issue are two different things, so we want to make sure we address their issues and concerns as well.
And glad to see that Commonwealth Attorney Stephanie Morales is going to be on board, because a lot of the communities, some of the residents are afraid to report things out, even though sometimes it happens if they're not residents of the city. It could be family members, and people are terrified, and I think everybody is crying out for some help, so I'm glad.
Absolutely.
She was in- In a direction that everybody can get some relief.
Relief, yes, ma'am. She was an important stakeholder that, from the beginning, we needed to have on board throughout this entire process, and we'll continue with that partnership going forward.
Good. Other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to ask Mr. Wright to come forward and give a briefing on the Atlantic Union Bank Pavilion, which is next month, the new name of our pavilion.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council. Just a brief update on the pavilion. The fabrication of the canopy is complete. The fabrication of the main mast is complete. The lower portion is going to go on final inspection and coating for delivery. I think it'll be ready for delivery this Friday. Crofton is starting the process to remove some of the vegetation that's going to be in the way of the cranes, do some cabling, to get ready to have those cranes in and take the mast down and start this whole procedure, so we're still tracking.
Any questions?
It's not going to disrupt any traffic or anything here.
No, ma'am. Follow zones, everything internal.
Still on the schedule for the June the 1st?
At this current point, yes, sir. Still tracking.
Other question? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, I'm going to ask Mrs. Elizabeth Gooden, our HR Director, to come forward and give you all an update on the VRS enhanced benefits, which includes two areas. You can come forward, Mrs., she's already there, okay? The hazardous duty supplement for paramedics and the VRS multiplier increase.
Yes. I don't know if we have the presentation, but really just to do some clarification. First and foremost, council had asked us to actually look at providing for our EMS paramedics, our full-time paramedics, providing them with enhanced hazardous duty benefits. Okay. And that's something that we will be doing in that regard. It's actually going to provide them, the enhanced supplement actually is going to provide a member who's hired on or after June 30th of 1974, 1974 has at least 20 or more years of hazardous duty at retirement, or a member hired before June 30th of 1974 who's vested under enhanced hazardous duty benefits. They act receive an annual retirement allowance of $13,584. And this amount is actually adjusted biannually. So, that's one of the things that I believe council asked us to go back and do. The premise was, as with our sworn fire and police who go out and respond to situations, we actually have our paramedics who actually accompany them, and there was some concern that we definitely agreed with, that we needed to make sure that we provided those paramedics who were riding along with them with those additional enhanced benefits. In addition, here is our VRS retirement multiplier. As you'll see, of all of our regional cities, the only one that's still currently at 1.7, 7% along with us is Hampton. Councilman Clark had mentioned that Hampton was definitely looking into it. I did speak to Nicole Clark, their HR Director, and they are actually looking to enhance the VRS multiplier for their sworn employees during this budget cycle. And also, in addition, that's something that we are actually going to be doing too also. It's important that we actually increase our multiplier, as you know, in the current date and time that we're in, attracting a good employment base, good employees, having good benefits, that are actually competitive with others is really going to enhance our ability to not only recruit our future sworn employees, but also to retain them. So, I think us keeping up with the rest of the cities was actually going to enhance that ability to attract and retain. What VRS actually does, they actually do an actuarial analysis, and I remember that I told you guys last time I came, I'd just gotten an update from VRS, but just yesterday, we actually got our actual evaluation, actuarial that we do. They actually do an actuarial analysis in the odd years. So, what's going to happen, anything that we have going on, primarily, this is based upon, it's really a lot of this for informational purposes, they do an evaluation on June 30th of 2017, because it's based on odd years, and that actuarial analysis will run for the next two fiscal years, so it'll run us for fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 20. Based upon our actual payroll, again, as of June 30th, it's about $678,447. But again, that's going to vary based upon our members, who's here and kind of where they are. To actually enact these changes, what we'll be doing as part of the, Dr. Patton will be doing as part of the fiscal year 20 budget, we'll be bringing forth resolutions so that we can adopt these changes in accordance with your desires and expectations. And I'm going to answer any questions that you may have.
So, the interpretation is that July 1 will be at 1.85?
That is correct, yes, sir.
We have adopted in the budget.
Any questions, any heartburn about that?
No.
Good.
And to include the hazardous duty multiplier for EMS. Yes, sir.
Fine.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, we have three city manager reports tonight. One is a request for amendment of CIP project funding source from debt to cash, and that's adoption of an ordinance amending the funding source in the FY 2019 capital improvement fund budget for the water treatment plant building assessment and repairs project from revenue bonds to cash, and that's to public utilities. The second is a 2019 personal property tax release, the adoption of an ordinance establishing a personal property tax release percentage of 53% for calendar year 2019 personal property tax fields. We are aware that in accordance with the Virginia Personnel Property Tax Relief Act, the city is required to annually establish a personal property tax relief percentage to be applied to qualified vehicles. It is with the assistance of both the City Treasurer and the Commission of Revenue, a personal property tax relief percentage of 53% has been calculated as sufficient to exalt the state's funds expected to be allocated to the City of Portsmouth for calendar year 2019. The last adoption will be the retirement of an adoption of a police K-9, and it is an adoption of a motion to permit the adoption of a Portsmouth Police Department K-9 unit dog named Eli, and Eli is eight years old, is a year over what retirement should be.
Also, keeping with the agenda, we have five public hearings. We've got a public hearing on the annual action plan, which is the community development block grant, and then 1914 will be three separate public hearings on the budget. We'll do them in that order, A, B, C. And then we have a public hearing on a conditional use permit.
I have one more thing.
And again, what we'll do, we'll give 10 minutes to the applicant, and then, once that's done, I'll call in the city manager, and you'll call in the planning director-
Yes, sir.
For any questions that we might have of a technical nature, and then we'll open the public hearing.
I have one more city council report back. During the March 26 meeting, it was a request for a report back from city council on the other post-employment benefits. This presentation will be brought forward at our Monday, April 22 meeting during the public work session. Both Mr. Ashby, Mrs. Gooden, and myself are working on that report back, and working with our actuary out of Boston.
Okay.
I finished.
Several of you have contacted me about other items, Bill, do you have mine?
Yes, I do, in fact. Thank you, Mayor. You know, as all of us know, at the retreat, one of our big four things was the-
Sorry.
Was to tell the Portsmouth story, and that is to improve our image and really change, try to change the perceptions of Portsmouth throughout Hampton Roads. And in doing that, we're planning more events, we're even doing direct mailers, and we're also committed to attracting more tourists to our city, something that tourist dollar is the best kind of dollar, and that it doesn't come from our taxpayers. So, we're doing a lot of, a lot of things to, to make sure the region knows that Portsmouth is an excellent place to live, work, and play. Unfortunately, in improving our image, many times, that's counterbalanced by the message that we send out during our council meetings in the non-agenda portion, and we had a little bit of experience of that at our last meeting. What I would like, Mayor, is for us to discontinue televising the non-agenda speaker portion of our meeting. You know, those who want to communicate to city council can still do that. Those who want to, all of us, I think around this table have thick skin, and we can, we can take the heat as good as probably anybody. But I think it's extremely important, on one hand, that we don't spend taxpayer money to improve our image, yet those many times who aren't armed with the facts are sending opposite message out throughout Hampton Roads. I think it's important to know that our meetings now are on YouTube, and YouTube is accessible by anyone, anywhere, at any time, and I also think it's there in perpetuity. So, I'm asking that we discontinue televising the non-agenda portion of our meetings effective when? Beginning tonight.
Okay.
And I would like to have a consensus, to see if we have a consensus to do exactly that.
Well, let's see if we can get a consensus first. How do you feel?
I would agree. I've taken that vote before.
Okay. Paul?
I don't know. I haven't given it a lot of thought.
I said I would be in favor. I want to know, I think the question I asked was how do other cities handle this? You know, we don't want to be the only city that's doing something that's not fair, or, you know, as perceived is not fair, but I'm in agreement with us telling our story. I think our agenda is set amply for people to be able to express whatever they want to say, and usually, our non-agenda item is, you know, a commercial bit for people to, you know, come up and make advertisements and things, and we will still get that information, but, like you said, and prepare to, you know, for, to be shown forever, perpetuity on YouTube, you know. But how do other cities handle it? That's my question, too.
Yes. Well, this, you know, we've had this discussion before, and we had talked about, you know, certain things where, you know, certain TV shows bleep things out and do certain things to cover things up, and we had had that discussion, saying that that wasn't a good option, so I agree, this is probably the best option, so that way, it doesn't look like, you know, the fact is, we're just not showing it, so nobody can say we were doing it for a specific person, or reason, or whatever else, and, you know, the business portion will still be there. It doesn't prevent the people coming to talk to us, it's just not going to put it on TV, because, like Bill said, a lot of the stuff they put out is not based on facts, and people get the wrong information from it that way, so I'd be in favor of it.
Well, you know, yeah, I've been listening to that discussion, and unfortunately, unless someone can tell me otherwise, it seems that we're attempting to suppress people's free speech. And I serve my country to defend the fact for everybody in this country to have a say. I may not agree with it. I don't agree with a lot of things, but the reality is, if people show up and come down here after they work a hard day, and they put in the work, the citizens of this community, they have every right to come before us, they're elected leaders, to say what they need to say, and I am going on the record to say, I am in no way willing to restrict anybody's free speech. I don't care how abhorrent it is.
Bill, are you restricting speech?
No, no, not at all. People will still be able to exercise their free speech. The only thing, I don't think there's anything written that we should take tax dollars to broadcast it beyond our city's boundaries to, many times, things that aren't factual and things that paint our city in a bad manner. But it's definitely, it's definitely not hindering free speech, Shannon.
Well, there's a lot of things that are not factual in life, and let me just tell you a story. It was two men, they were married, they had wives, and their wives used to talk all the time, and one of them, his solution was to hit the wife, and the other one's solution was let her run her mouth, because that's all she can do. If you take that from her, she might go to a different stage on you. People are going to talk, they're going to complain, they're going to, and I understand what you mean by non-agenda items, but we need to be open with these meetings 100%. We can't, if we can't take the heat, we need to get out of the kitchen, because there's a lot of heat in these seats, and you can't hide the truth, if, I mean, if it's true, if it's not true, people will sort through it and find the truth, but we don't have anything to hide, and if that's, that's what people do, they vent, and you can't stop them from venting, and you can't make these meetings sweet lily right along. They are bumpy at times. All meetings are bumpy at times, so let's not try to, you know, take the stench out of the meetings, so.
I think it's important to remember that Portsmouth has kind of led the way, I think, not kind of, I think has led the way, in part to a recommendation from Bill Moody, maybe six or eight years ago, that we were the first city in the region, I know, to record and put on, available to the public, these public work sessions. No other city did that before we did it. We just, a year or two ago, increased the amount of time for our citizen speakers from three minutes to five minutes, which I supported. I don't think anybody's trying to- I don't think anybody's trying to limit anybody's speech.
That's not what we see.
I think this is my time.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. And so, you know, whether, I am perfectly comfortable, I would not be comfortable with limiting any recording of our agenda part of our meeting. I think that is absolutely what we owe the public. But what is non-agenda is literally non-agenda. And I am happy to sit here all night and listen to everybody's five minutes, but I don't think we have a responsibility to promote it to the rest of the world.
I'm trying to give everybody a chance to speak one time, then we'll go back around. Did you have your hand up, Shannon?
I've said what I need to say.
Mr. City.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I think you could ask some question.
Well, I was going to ask the city attorney. Not televising non-agenda speakers, but still allowing them five minutes to speak on any subject, is that a restriction of speech?
No, Mayor, there's no obligation to publish the video of non-agenda speakers.
Okay. Is that clear for everybody?
And do we know how any other cities, have we seen how any other cities handle?
I think they probably televise them, but, you know, like in everything, we're not bound by.
By what the other cities do.
What they do.
All right, Bill's proposal is that we not, not televise the non-agenda speakers. We could have 20, we could have 25, 30, whatever. They still get the same amount of time. They can speak on any topic that they want. The topic's not restricted. And Bill's proposal is we start that tonight. Let's see where we are on that proposal. Elizabeth?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes. All right. So we'll start that tonight. Did anybody else, Elizabeth, did you have something? All right, let's go to city council liaison reports, and we'll start with Shannon.
So the planning commission, we had one opportunity come before us, and that's going to move forward in discussion. It's going to be, I think, a Shiffy Lou type place or something, I don't know, but it's going to move forward. There was a discussion about bringing on board another planning commissioner, so we need to probably, at the time appointed, to make that decision to bring on another one. They said they need some help, so we need another commissioner to get appointed. Other than that, they did talk about the Complete Count Committee. That's going to be ramping up for the 2020 census. I think that falls under planning, so they're going to be giving us some more guidance on getting the committee together and moving forward in that process.
Okay.
Well, actual report, Regional Jail Board, we meet next week, so I have a full report on that. But in the meantime, I did, I was able to attend, I was invited to attend the Tywhiter Community College Job Skills Training Program Board Meeting. And so talking with them, we had a discussion, and I've since got that individual from TCC in contact with Superintendent Hackworth, trying to get some training that they could start, the training within the facility, and possibly, you know, once they're released from the facility, they can start training at the Workforce Center on Airline Boulevard. So as that's moving forward, I will bring that back. Like I said, we had the actual meeting next week, so I have a full report after that.
I have my PRHA meeting next week, but I am liaison on the Stop, Inc. board. And one of the things that I mentioned, I don't know if I mentioned it to you, they previously had their annual golf tournament, which is a fundraiser for Stop, Inc. at Calhoun Plantation Golf Course that's recently closed. So that will now be moving to Bydaway. So it's going to be the first time that's going to be in Portsmouth. They're hoping to get some sponsorships and hopefully to get some attendance. So I'll be coming back to you with more information for that tournament at Bydaway in August.
Okay. Nothing is reported, Bill?
Portsmouth Community Service Board, they had their federal review. This is an inspection that they have yearly and sometimes every three year, but years. But this particular inspection, they received a three-year license. That says that they are the best in all of the services that they provide, that they are the best. So that means that the state and the federal government won't have to come to them every six months or every year. They trust their work that they saw and their knowledge of what they're doing enough to say, well, you won't see us for three years. So we need to get a letter out congratulating them on that achievement.
Thank you, Mr. Van.
I did have one more thing, I'm sorry. I met with Ruth Jones Nichols with the food bank, and in our review, Nate and I had our meeting with Dr. Patton and her team, and we noticed that there was no funding in there for the food bank, who previously got $10,000 every year. They had depleted their food bank during the government shutdown, and they weren't aware that they needed to apply annually. They thought it was just something that was going to occur. So we did speak with Dr. Patton, and hopefully we.
And I shared with the vice mayor, would she bring that to members of council? And the director indicated just what she said. It was the shutdown, they were just busy, they missed the deadline. And there is a process that we follow where they have to submit their documentations with council's concurrence. Then we will reach out to the director, get that information in, and then adjust where they would be as they had been in the support to organization.
Yes.
We have a concurrence?
Yes.
Yes. As you know, the Virginia Municipal League is organized into sections. They have an urban section, a city section, a town section. They have policy committees, some of you serve on policy committees or in one of the sections. Shannon Kane, councilwoman from Virginia Beach, was the chair of the urban section. I was the vice chair. She's now resigned. She's going to run for another office. And so I have been pushed up to be the chair of the urban section, and as such, I'll be on the executive committee of the VML. Very good. With that, we need a motion to go into closed session.
I move to go into closed meeting, A, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711 8.3, for the purpose of discussing the acquisition and disposition of real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body specifically regarding the Victory Crossing area, and B, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711 8.7, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body specifically regarding Deontre Sward versus Jeremy Derocher, Portsmouth Circuit Court CL 1900 224-00, and C, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711 8.8, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding the financial relationship between the city of Portsmouth and Portsmouth Public Schools.
Second. Any discussion on the motion?
I will be recusing myself on item A.
I'll do that first. And please note that in the minutes. Ready for the question? The question is to adopt the motion. Madam Clark, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucasberg?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes. We're in closed session. Most people will not.